Good evening. The Finance and Law Subcommittee shall come to order. Roll call, Mrs. Shavz.
Present.
Mr. Viera?
Present.
Chairman DeMello, present. First item on the agenda, we have the procurement card. See attached memo. I don't know if we need any input from Mrs. Monahan, or if we have any questions.
As I always provide each month, you'll see in front of you the charges for June. On the P-card, as you can see, everything has been color-coded. If charges have been gone to grant-funded, charges in green are department's revolving account, oranges are charged to the school's activity account, and charges in red are school food services. So if you just jump down to the bottom, in the month of June, $24,961.34 was charged to the P-card, which means a total year-to-date, just over $200,000. Amount charged this month to the student activity account is just over $4,000. Amounts charged to grants, $13,300. Amounts charged to revolving is $7,200. Charges to food services account, $225. And the amount charged to school budget is $109.97. Again, breakdown is there, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Great. What are the wishes of the committee?
Motion received and placed on file.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it. Thank you. Next up, we have bills payable. We'll start off with FY '25, in the amount of $484,338.39. Wish to the committee.
Motion to approve, and the amount stated.
Seconded.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I think so. I just had one question on the last page. Diablo Inc., page...
Page sixteen.
It is an annual subscription to the foreign language site.
Oh, wonderful. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Monahan, can I...
Mrs. Shavz.
Anything that begins with 21, you said, is grants?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I had that.
I'll ask while we wait for Mrs. Shavz. So, on page one, there's a large amount for Four Imprints Inc. I understand this is a very large company, and I always like to stay local if we can. Any reason why we go with someone like an online vendor?
They provided us with the items that we needed at a quick turnaround time, and they had the best prices.
Okay, great. Thank you. And, I guess, page six and page eleven, a couple items that stand out. Again, I'm looking for, to see if we can make improvements for our employees when they travel. I see one on page six that has Uber reimbursements, and on page eleven, I believe it's Lyft. So, since we now have a central payment system as a P-card, is it possible that we could subscribe to Uber for business and Lyft for business? I don't know. I know it's Uber for Business with Uber. I don't know if Lyft has the same program. And again, it's more of a safety mechanism for us, and it's not the $28 or the whatever amounts on here. That's not what the issue is. It's the issue of centralizing payment. We know where they are for safety issues, okay? And they're not waiting to be reimbursed. So if we could look into that, I don't know if we need a motion for that, but to see if we could benefit for, I know Uber, it's Uber for Business. I don't know what the program would be called for Lyft. Folks could install this on their mobile phones, and would be pegged to the P-card, or whatever card we want to peg it to. That's what we do at the university. So not only is it not encumbering their out-of-pockets, but it gives us a sense of safety, that we know that our employees, where they're being picked up, who's picking them up, and all that good stuff. So, that's something...
Motion for that?
Motion would be approved.
Okay.
Motion to approve that, so we make sure that we've got Lyft and Uber.
So...
See if we can streamline things for any of our staff that's traveling.
Sure, so...
Make sure they're safe.
Absolutely. Okay, so it would be, the form motion would be to look into Uber for Business and Lyft, whatever that...
Whatever the symbol of that is.
Exactly. Great.
Second the motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. And, let's see. And we did ask last time about the, oh boy, the per diems. Per diems. Do we have any answers yet on that?
We do. I have reached out to the city, and the city has, is, they had a plan, and then there were some additional items that they needed to look into. So as of right now, I don't have a definitive plan of how it's going to be rolled out from the city to us. And so, once I do have a more concrete plan from the city, I will bring it to the school committee.
Okay. I mean, do we have to wait for the city? I mean, we can't do this on our own?
No. The city ordinance, and so we must go ahead and follow their ordinance.
All right. Maybe we should look into their city ordinance to see what it says, because I don't, I, listen, I mean, we're both unique entities. We have folks that, you know, especially with the Bar Foundation and other different grants we're getting, I'm sure we have a lot more movement than the city has for their employees on, you know, cross-country trips and so forth. So I'm just trying to, again, make it easier for our employees, not have out-of-pocket expenses and wait to be reimbursed. They're not large amounts, but still, it's an inconvenience. So, we'll wait for that follow-up from the city. All right, so, questions are done, so the motion is on the floor for FY '24. Did you make the motion, Mr. Viera?
I did.
It was seconded by Mrs. Shavz. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Next up, we have bills payable for FY '24, in the amount of $268,067.33. Wish to the committee.
Motion to approve, and the amount stated.
Seconded.
Wonderful. On discussion, page one, Bristol Community College, $15,000. Any idea what that is for?
That is for the CVC and ASL Student Spring Courses. So those are the courses that are dual enrollment courses that our students will take place in.
Okay. We don't have any, is this like a discounted rate, or is it state subsidized? Do we have any state subsidies in this?
I'd have to look into that. I'm not sure.
Because I know with the program with the adult learners, everything's for free, so it's kind of crazy that adult learners can get it for free, but our students can't.
It's 25-older.
Right.
Yeah, we buy the courses.
Right. So it's kind of, you know, it's ironic that, anyway. That's just my opinion. Okay.
Do you know that $15,000 is for all the courses? Those two, those two courses that are for the spring courses, for all of the students.
Yeah. I mean, I agree with the program. It just doesn't make sense that we have to pay for something that the state subsidizes for another population of students. So, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. And, motion to adjourn would be in order.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I call the meeting to order. If you could please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see, by the dawn's early night, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? Mrs. Fagan, if you would lead the invocation?
Yes. Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy, and ask out your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care. And if you'll remain standing, we have one to announce the loss of one of our personnel from a long time ago. Kenneth Edward Almeida, who was born to Edward and Dorothy Almeida in New Bedford, Mass., where he spent his early life. He attended the Berklee College of Music in Boston, graduating with a degree of music from the Northern Conservatory of Music in Bangor, Maine. He spent his entire professional career as a music director and educator for the city of Taunton, conducting chorus bands and directing theater programs with the community, impacting the lives of so many. And after retirement, he pursued his love for art in various mediums. He survived by his wife, his brother, and three sons and three grandchildren, along with several nieces and nephews. I would just like to say that we are extremely proud of the work that he did, and that we honor the devotion that he gave to Taunton High School to spend his whole career here. And he did a great job, and we all remember him for that, but also to keep his family in our thoughts and in our prayers. So, moment of silence, please, for Kenny Almeida. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan.
And roll call.
Roll call, please. Thank you.
Mr. Renus.
Present.
Mrs. Shavz.
Present.
Mr. Palowski.
Present.
Mrs. Fagan's present. Ms. Santos.
Present.
Mr. Viera.
Present.
Mr. Lura.
Present.
Chairman DeMello.
Present.
And Mayor O'Conne.
Present. Thank you. Approval of the minutes of August 7th, 2024?
Motion to accept as recorded by date of the 7th of August.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None opposed, so voted.
And I'd like to just respond by saying I'm present. I was not present at that meeting.
Okay. Thank you. We do not have a Student Advisory Committee report this evening. Is there any public input this evening?
There is none.
Okay, thank you. And we will go to E., which is Executive Session. Dr. DeMello, are you making a motion?
Sure. So, a motion would be in order to go into Executive Session to discuss cybersecurity protocols pursuant to exemption four of Massachusetts General Laws 30A, Section 21A 4, and to reconvene an open session. That will be by roll call, Mayor.
Is there a second? Motion and second on a roll call, please, Mrs. Fagan?
Sure. Mr. Renus?
Yes.
Mrs. Shavz?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Ms. Santos?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mr. Lura?
Yes.
Dr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mayor O'Conne.
All right, great. Mrs. Santos? Make a motion to come out of Executive Session?
Seconded.
Motion and second to come out of Executive Session. Do we need that on a roll call also?
Yes.
Yeah. Roll call, please.
Mr. Renus?
Yes.
Mrs. Shavz?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Ms. Santos?
Yes.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Mr. Lura?
Yes.
Dr. DeMello?
Yes. If I may amend the motion, I know votes were taken. It's part of the motion.
It doesn't change. We don't have to do the roll call again, right?
All right. If there's no objection. Okay. All right. So, all set. Next, we have Social Emotional Learning Update, and that will be by Chris Barata, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction.
Good evening, everybody. In a moment, I'm going to introduce Dr. Linda Watt, our Director of School Counseling and Therapeutic Supports here. But it's important to note that her work isn't defined by a certain classification of students. Dr. Watt works collaboratively with myself for curriculum instruction, Amy Monahan, Director of Special Education, along with Stephanie Hoy, Student Services. Because a lot of the work, Dr. Watt's work is grounded in evidence-based curricula, it lends itself more towards my oversight or introduction tonight than perhaps the other two. Because the work that she will support in the district is for all students, each and every student, not just a certain particular type of student prototype. So having said that, I'd like to introduce you to Dr. Linda Watt, and present the update for the social-emotional learning that has taken place since last spring. Dr. Watt?
Thank you. Good evening. So I wanted to start, oh, here we go. Good. Okay. I wanted to start with just looking at social-emotional learning and mental health, and really defining those two things. So when we talk about social-emotional learning, we're talking about skills that everybody has, that they need to develop in order to interact with people, in order to function, in order to manage their emotions. When we talk about mental health, we really talk about kind of your emotional functioning. So we're talking about anxiety. We're talking about depression. We're talking about how you manage kind of stressors and things like that in your life. So you need those social-emotional skills in order to support your mental health. So that's kind of the differentiation between those two things. But when we talk about the students, we're going to talk about both of these things. So what I want to really talk about is the fact, when we talk about supports for the youth, we want to talk about tiered supports. We want to look at like an MTSS model, and we're going to put into place tiered supports for our students. And these are the things that we want to see come out of those tiered supports. So we really want to see students engaging more in their own learning, and feeling like they're connected to their classrooms. We want to see the children being able to manage their emotions better, and tolerate frustration or discomfort in their classroom. We want to see a decrease in our suspension and an increase in our attendance. We really want to see less conflict amongst the students with each other and with the adults. And we want to provide spaces for the young people to be able to reframe kind of what's going on for them, to be able to refocus so they can function in the classroom, they can repair their relationships, and then they can reengage. So from the spring of last year until now, some of the things that have occurred have been that we completed our universal screenings. So we did our CELIS, which looks at those social-emotional learning skills. And we did our SABERS in June, which looks more at the social, academic, and emotional behavior of our students. And I'll talk about kind of the results of those in a minute. We did a lot of professional development, which I'll talk about. We did hiring. We've had one year, a full year, with our reset rooms in every class, in every building. Our BRIGHT program, which I'm going to talk about specifically, is started in the spring, and has been going strong since it started. And Manit, which is the clinic that opened at Parker, hired their behavioral health staff. So, and she attended our last district mental health meeting of the school year, so she is now part of that. So, in the spring, we did our CELIS. We administered that through third grade all the way through 12th grade. The students take this, and it looks at their five castle competencies, their five social-emotional skills. So it looks at social awareness, self-awareness, self-regulation, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. And we've been giving this in the fall and the spring every year since 2021. So this is our data. And what we're looking at here is, we want our children to be in that developed skills or the highly-developed skills area, so that anywhere from 500 to over 600 is where we want the children to score. So a good number of population, over 50% of our students, are scoring in that range. On the flip side of that, we do still have a high number of students that are developing those skills or have emerging skills. So those are the children that we're going to focus on more when we talk about our Tier One interventions. So these students will get, all students in the district get a Tier One intervention. So those are the students that we want to look at building up some skills, and our Tier One intervention will help with that. So, we have MINDUP, which is our curriculum that we implemented two years ago. Last year, we implemented it across the district for kindergarten all the way through 7th grade. This year, we're going to, at the beginning, provide professional development on Monday, about what the expectations are for MINDUP. So looking at how we're going to do MINDUP in all of the classrooms. We're going to do walkthroughs to make sure that we're implementing MINDUP with fidelity at this point in time. So those are the two main pieces for the Tier One. And then we are also, we have three schools that attended a restorative practice training for six full Saturdays with Suffolk University, and they are implementing a Tier One restorative practice. So that's Chamberlain, E. Paul, and Friedman. So when I talk about a Tier One restorative practice, that aligns very much with the district's focus this year of belonging. A Tier One restorative practice is about building community. So anyone that remembers Open Circle years ago, restored, the Tier One restorative practice is a circle. And what it does is it connects the students to their classroom and to their buildings. So one of the things that these three schools are going to do is they're going to pilot that, and then we're going to collect some data with regard to how they, the school is doing. And we're going to have some more increased PD for the teachers on embedding some trauma-informed social-emotional practices into daily classroom teaching. We started that today with the new teacher orientation, where we talked a lot about how they can start to embed in their classrooms just certain things that will build up those social-emotional skills for the children in their classroom. So then we also, as I said, administered the SABERS. And when we look at the SABERS, this looks at students' emotional, academic, and social behavioral functioning in the classroom, and it places them into risk. Teachers K through 7 complete this on all the students that they have, and then the students complete it from 2 through 12. Everybody in the purple range are students that are at low risk. So we have a lot of students that are at low risk at this point in time. Anyone in the light pink is moderate risk, and in the bright pink is high risk. So we really want to, again, focus our Tier Two or our Tier Three interventions on that population of students, because they're at high risk with regard to those risk factors. So our Tier Two and our Tier Three expectations going forward for this school year will be, we are going to, at the beginning of the year, provide a review of data analysis and identifying students utilizing a rubric, which I shared with you in the spring. We will review that with all of the buildings, and then review how they should be reviewing data. All the data from the spring screenings will be reviewed in September, and then all of the school-based mental health teams will identify the students that will go into Tier Two or Tier Three groups or supports. They will, there'll be consistent scheduling of tiered groups by the school counselors and the school adjustment counselors. We're going to make sure that we ensure that they're collecting data during their groups, and they're using evidence-based practices. And this is very important, that we want them to be using evidence-based curriculum, much like we're using for reading and for math. We want them to also be using evidence-based curriculums when they're doing these interventions. And then we're going to do continued PD on data collection. So our reset room, we went over this in the spring a little bit. This is our end-of-the-year data. These are all the number of students that used our reset spaces last year, per school. So some, some schools to say some shout-outs to is, Paul did an excellent job establishing their reset room. Their staff in that reset room were like a well-oiled machine. They really worked well with different expectations of their students and interventions. Mulcahy utilized their space very effectively with regard to teaching children recess skills. So you'll see that high number of students that used the space. They used that for children that were struggling at recess. They would have the children come to the reset room, teach them some skills, and then take them outside with the adults and generalize those skills. So teaching them how to play, which was very important, because a lot of times we see conflict in the recess yards. So everybody used the reset room a little bit differently, but we did have a lot of successes. So when we talk about that data, the reset expectation is that every reset room is collecting data in the same exact way. So you'll see through this data collection, different students use the room for different reasons. Some of them have a behavior plan, and it's part of their behavior plan. Some of them, it was an unscheduled break, but because they were having difficulties in a classroom as part of their plan, they came down. Some of them had scheduled breaks, so they were using it. And then we also have the reason why they used it, and a strategy that was taught or supported, so that we can start to, again, collect that data on what works and what doesn't work for particular students. So our lessons learned from our reset spaces were, was that we had increased time on learning. Because we have the academic support in the reset space, when the student comes down, dysregulated, and we work with them on a skill, the academic tutor then supports them with what they should have been learning in the classroom during that time, so that when they go back up to the classroom, they have not missed the learning, and that they're ready to learn again. So they're not missing anything, so that they'll become dysregulated again. We have seen increased relationships within the building, because now they have connected with other people in the building, so therefore there's more opportunities for them to engage in their learning. They are now able to generalize their skills more within the academic classrooms, because our support staff from the reset room also goes into the classrooms with them, and helps generalize the skills that they're using in the reset room. So it allows for the children to understand how they're supposed to use those skills in the classroom. The only drawback was, there's been some inconsistent implementation, which impacted the data collection piece. So going forward this year, we will fix that and make sure that we're consistently implementing things. So our next steps for the reset space, we're going to do a review, which we've started already, a review of the reset room expectations. So what a student support meeting should look like, what a behavior plan should look like, how they should be collecting data, and how they should run in groups. We're going to review data collection, and making sure that everybody is utilizing that same exact data collection, so all of it looks the same. We're going to work with them on monthly reviews of the data, so that we can start to tweak things for students as needed, rather than waiting. We want to use evidence-based group curriculums and individual interventions. And walkthroughs will take place frequently this year to make sure that we're implementing all of these things with fidelity. BRIGHT is a program that started in April of last year. We started, right after April Vacation, we became fully functioning. It is a room, a classroom, that provides support for students who are transitioning back from hospitalization for significant mental health issues, or from out-of-school placement for significant mental health issues. Students who are on the cusp of possibly being hospitalized, or students who are just struggling with significant mental health issues, that they're not functioning well within the academic setting. It is very short-term. It's intensive. It's a Tier Three intervention. It's for all students. And we had 11 students from the end of April until the end of the school year utilize this space. This is a grant-funded initiative. So we have a social worker, a teacher, and an academic tutor in this setting. And this will be all year this year. So we'll have really, they, there's particular data that we have to collect for the grant, so we'll be utilizing that data to kind of prove whether it's effective or not. Since last year, we've had a lot of professional development. So throughout the year, we did the restorative practice through Suffolk University, where 12 staff from three different buildings attended, as I said, six full Saturdays of training. So they will be leading the implementation of these practices within their buildings this year. We had dialectical behavior therapy, which, in schools, for all of our counseling staff, they were trained. DBT is an evidence-based curriculum that looks at four components. One of them is mindfulness, distress tolerance, emotion regulation, and interpersonal skills. So it hits all five of those social-emotional competencies that we really want to develop in young people. So all of our counseling staff have been trained in that, and how to utilize it in school, and they have received the curriculum that goes along with that. We also did training in the March PD, and then we did follow-up training in June on group planning and progress monitoring and data collection for all of our counseling staff. So they understand when we give them a curriculum, how do you plan your group, how do you collect data, and how do you progress monitor students? So we really wanted to make sure that they were trained, so that they know how to monitor if the students are getting what they're supposed to get out of these curriculums. There's a chart in here that's two pages long. I'm not going to go through the whole chart, but what this looks at is, at the end of the school year, for the last, I think, maybe four or five years, we've been running a mental health, what we call mental health boot camp. So we do five full days of professional development for our counseling staff, but we also invite all staff in the district to attend. So admin, teachers, any support staff who would like to attend, paras, anyone who wants to attend can attend these trainings. And they range all the way from looking at adult SEL and decreasing burnout in the adults, to teaching executive functioning in the classroom, which is great for a teacher. Some of them are more leaning towards the counseling staff, so things like motivational interviewing and CBT in schools lends itself more for the counseling staff. But working with behaviors and ODD, we had 53 teachers attend that in those five days after. So those are days that they don't have to come in, and we had 53 teachers attend. and we had fifty-three teachers attend that because they really wanted to learn. And that was a whole day PD. So when we think about the end of the school year, we have a district mental health team, which is a multidisciplinary team. It consists of the nurse manager, myself, the director of guidance. We have school counselors, psychologists, school adjustment counselors, teachers. All attend a, once-a-month meeting to discuss what are the needs across the district with regard to our students', social-emotional learning, and mental health. So at the beginning of the school year, we identified some needs. This, the needs come from the school-based mental health teams. So what are the school-based mental health teams talking about? Their needs come to the district mental health meeting. And then we came up with several protocols over the year. The first one being our crisis intervention protocol. We did not have a uniform, consistent protocol across buildings that looked at young people who are at risk to themselves or others. So if a student presents at risk to themselves, we actually have a protocol to follow inclusive of an evidence-based screener, the Columbia Suicide Screener, that the counselors will use so that everybody is using a uniform, consistent protocol. And then that leads to our Section 12 protocol. So if a student needs to be hospitalized, we have a protocol in place now that if we need to section a student, what would that look like? So that just came at the end of the year. We created documentation for counselors because one of the things that we found was there was no consistent documentation across the district for every counselor when they meet with a young person, what they noted. So we created some consistent documentation. And we're currently working on a protocol for referrals to the man at behavioral health person because we have one behavioral health person for the district in, at Manette. So we want to make sure that we utilize that person appropriately and we make appropriate referrals. We want a, an exact protocol for return from a mental health hospitalization and a protocol for mental health support after an incident or a tragedy. So we want to create a protocol for that to respond. So that's going forward. We did have the Competitive Mental Health Grant last year. So some of the things that our funds were utilized for were to purchase evidence-based group curriculum for all grade levels. So there's access to evidence-based group curriculum at all grade levels. We purchased supplies for all of the reset rooms to make sure that they had what they needed in order to support the students. We purchased another full year of universal screeners. We also provided clinical supervision for our counseling staff. So in order for school adjustment counselors to get their professional license, they have to have an independent license for their master's degrees. And a lot of times, if someone doesn't have a licensed supervisor, they can't get that independent license. So what we did was we took our licensed people, so our LICSWs, our LMHCs, and we paid them to provide clinical supervision to people who needed it. So this was outside of the school day, and it was for their independent licenses. So what this does is it provides sustainability for us as a district because that will allow our school adjustment counselors to get their professional license. And a lot of times, what you hear from them is that they're very happy that this was provided to them because if not, they have to pay for this outside. And so they're getting something that makes them want to stay here in the district because it provides them with their independent license. And then the grant funded a lot of the professional developments that I had talked about. Our staffing and hiring update. All of our positions were filled at each location this past year. There were some internal movements that occurred mid-year. So we did have, particularly at some schools, we had some people leave and new people come. And currently, there's only one social work position that we're looking for, and there are interviews ongoing. So again, we're almost fully staffed for this next school year. So the goals for social-emotional learning and mental health for this coming academic year is consistent walkthroughs through the reset rooms and the classrooms to make sure that we're implementing our tiered supports with fidelity. We're going to implement grade-level meetings with our counseling staff so that allows for them to utilize that training with regard to group planning. But then there'll be some accountability to make sure that they're consistently using that evidence-based practice that we asked or we purchased for them. We're going to pilot that tiered restorative practices within the three buildings that were trained. We're going to review our data frequently from the screenings. So right now, currently, we will be reviewing at the beginning of this school year. We're going to review again mid-year and then at the end to look at the screenings to make sure that the kids are getting the interventions that they need. We're going to look, and when we look at our screenings, we'll be looking at attendance and we'll be looking at the student support data at the same time. And then we'll reconvene that multidisciplinary district team that I was talking about to assess and monitor where our resources or what other things that we need for the school year. This final slide was something as an example of, with the hope by the end of this academic year, every school building will have a tiered support that identifies what is available in their buildings for the, for that building. So what are their tier one supports, what are their tier two supports? This came out of Bright. When we were doing the Bright Grant, this was kind of a tool that they utilized. So the tool is very effective because it matches our MTSS model. So we're, we are going to develop one of these for every school building.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Watts.
Thank you.
Excellent presentation and for really educating us on your focus on social-emotional learning and mental health, two, you know, very important things for our children and families right now. And it really sounds like you are focused in all of the areas that are needed. I just have one question, and I'm going to open it right up to the school committee. And I don't know if I missed it when I stepped out. But in, in putting together your, your vision, your goals, your plan, implementing all these great programs and pieces of this, were families involved in, you know, kind of understanding what their needs are, what they feel like they need more access to or their kids need more access to?
When we did our surveying last year, we did not get a lot of response back from families with regard to surveys. My goal this year will be to survey families more consistently and hopefully get a lot of feedback. We did get some feedback when I sent out the information with regard to our screeners. So I did speak to a lot of families at that time that when they were asking questions about the screeners and things like that, I got some feedback from families about their concerns.
Okay, yeah, that's great. And I guess you can only use what you get back. And surveys aren't always answered by a lot of people, so, all right, thank you. Okay, I'll open it right up. Mrs. Schofs?
Dr. Watts, thank you so much. That was an excellent presentation. A couple of things, three things that really came to mind is, I like that you're looking at the protocols and really setting up your informed decisions based on the data you're getting. And I think that is important. And I think the most important thing is that last slide that you just showed us, that, that triangle. I, I think it's so important that staff members know what the tiered supports are in each building, and they can be different from building to building. So I do think it's very important that you have it specifically by building. I mean, I think, I sometimes, at the school, something will happen and, and we don't know what to do or who to go to or what supports are in. And I think that will circumvent a lot of that. So excellent job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Laura?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Dr. Watts, thank you for that wonderful presentation. As far as the tiered interventions on a three-tier, as far as the reset concept of the children, are they like repeated students that go back to these reset rooms?
So the reset room, in order to utilize the reset room, we have a student support meeting where the team that works with that student meets to discuss what that student's needs are, and they create a plan for the reset room for that student. And every six weeks, that plan is revisited to make sure that what we're doing is working. And if it's not working, we can tweak it so they can spend more time or less time in the reset space. Or they, they're not utilizing the reset space effectively, so therefore, that was not a good intervention. So we revisit the plan every six weeks. So it is the same students, but that we revisit them every six weeks. The other use for that would be as an alternative to discipline. So when they're going through the discipline process, instead of an out-of-school suspension, the admin may decide to utilize the reset space as a tool to teach the child some skills that they need for that one day rather than having the student home there in the school building. So the academic tutor can work with them on their schoolwork and the social worker can work with them on whatever they needed to work on so that they don't kind of participate in that same behavior.
And do the students feel stigmatized in the sense that they're, they're being picked on and put in this environment?
No, it's a choice. It's a choice. We run it by the parents. We make sure that the parents are okay with our utilization of that. Yep. So we have parent consent, and then we talk to the students. I have found that most of the students actually want to use the space. And we actually have students that ask, like, can I use the reset space? How do I get to use the reset space? So we have a lot of students that utilize the space without any stigma because it's not attached to behavior. It's not attached to any type of disability. It's literally available for any student.
And those that benefit from it go back to the classroom and say, you know, it was great for me because I needed that special attention.
Right, exactly. We have a lot of students that say, I might need to be able to use that space. And so we have conversations with them.
Good. Thank you.
No problem.
Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for your presentation, Dr. Watts. When you were talking about the reset space in your presentation, you had said that it's utilized differently based on the school. Is that by design from the district to determine which is going to be best? And then, secondly, is there a plan to have, like, the space used universally the same? Or would you keep it case by case, school by school?
The plan is for it to be used more consistently the same. When we implemented it last year, we implemented it and there were a lot of different spaces and we were in the process of hiring the staff. And then what happened was, you know, there weren't consistent walkthroughs to make sure that the space was being utilized consistently the same way. So the plan for this year is to try to make it more consistent across the district so that when we collect data, the data is accurate and we can utilize that data in a more effective way.
Awesome. Excellent. Thank you so much.
Okay, Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mayor. So for the CELIS, just for my education purposes, the data is reported for spring of thirty-nine hundred thirty-six students. Is it limited to a certain grade level?
It is grades three through twelve.
But only thirty-nine hundred were part of the CELIS? Is there a reason that we excluded so many?
We didn't exclude them. Like, part of the consistency for this coming year will be to make sure that when we put the window out, that they actually implement it and take it. So we do have an opt-out for students. We probably have no more than fifty to sixty students whose parents opt them out of the CELIS. So we put a window out and we have the schools administer it per grade level. And then typically about three weeks into the window, DESI decides this window for us. We don't decide the window. So about three weeks into the window, I ask if we can get some input from DESI about how many students have completed it. Sometimes they can give me that data, sometimes they can't. Last year was a year of transition with DESI because the person that was running the CELIS historically left, and they had a new person last year. So he had a little bit more difficulty kind of accessing that information for me. So I was not able to get out to the schools like, hey, you guys only have this many students that took it. Can we make sure that the classrooms took it? So this year, hopefully, we'll be able to get that data earlier so that we can make sure that it gets implemented.
Okay. So, yeah, because that's a big number. And just if I may, on the Bright program, I, I want to share, not only my colleagues but folks at home, that we had a particular student with some traumatic experiences. And I can tell you that the parent was way above the accolades that were all good. And not only that, the, the main point was that the parent knows the daughter or the caregiver knows the son, okay? And they can pick up a phone and call ahead and say, hey, Jimmy's not going to be doing well today in school, so heads up, or vice versa. And there were certain folks, you were at that meeting, Dr. Watts, I believe, Dr. Amy Monahan was there too, Special Ed Director. And these conversations took place on weekends, took place at night, took place early in the morning. So it's, it's, I want to commend the entire group, the entire staff that went above and beyond to not only take care of that one student but many others that I know are taken care of. But it's the parents that brought that to my attention. And I had to come and actually see for myself. Not that I didn't doubt any of it, but they wanted me to be there to better understand the relationship that was built that transformed this student a hundred and twenty percent, a hundred and fifty percent because there's some days that, just not good days, and it works both ways. So I commend you and your staff and everybody involved for that one student. I know there are many others, so thank you for your work.
Thank you. Superintendent?
So I want to commend Dr. Watts for an excellent presentation. And when we were preparing for the presentation this afternoon and going through the slides, one thing that was clearly evident is that this work started back during my entry plan seven years ago. And you think of where we were seven years ago to where we are now with having Bright spaces, recess spaces, multiple psychologists in schools, school adjustment councils. Again, this committee, you've done some hard work, made some difficult decisions and the city has provided us with the funding to be able to build and continue to build a robust mental health, social-emotional program to support all our kids. And it's only been about a year, year and a half since we've been consistently collecting or three years collecting data. And we all know that when we implement change, it takes about three years. So we're moving in the right direction. It's not where we want it yet, but I'm very proud of the work that this committee has supported. I'm very proud of the work that Dr. Watts and our administration has led because we're going to continue to build, we're going to continue to add, just like we've done with all our robust programs. So excellent presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question? Thank you, Superintendent. Mr. Laura?
One more question, briefly. Dr. Watts, with all the resources that I make, we're making available for the student population, do you see the teaching faculty also appreciating all that we're doing to work with the student population in that we're addressing many of the concerns which occur as far as discipline in the classroom?
I think we're on our way, as Mr. Cabral pointed out. You know, it takes time. But this past year, with the reset room spaces being in play, I'm in the buildings all the time. And one of the things that you hear from the teachers a lot of times is they are very thankful for the space that the students can be in because the students now are not sitting in the office. They're sitting in a space where they have access to their academics and they have access to support. So they're also still learning. So when they come back into the classroom, they're better prepared to be in that classroom. So it's not that they're kind of sitting for fifteen minutes because they, you know, had a difficult time in a classroom and then that class period's over and they go back. They're actually working on the schoolwork. So the, the teachers are seeing that the students are coming back better prepared to be in their classroom space. And I guess, and as Mr. Cabral pointed out, it's going to take a little bit more time, but we have a lot more resources for the teachers. We talked, we talk a lot about the school counselors. The school counselors are in the classrooms now. They're in the classrooms on a regular basis, providing supports to the teachers. They're providing tiered groups to the teachers because they no longer have to do special education. So they're in the classrooms and they're able to provide support when the students are struggling. So we do see a lot more support. And the teachers, you can definitely see that they're getting, they're feeling more supported.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right. Well, thank you. I think we're all set. So thank you for the presentation. Thank you for taking the time to be here this evening with us. All right, we will go to G. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm not going to read my reports verbatim, but I'll just highlight the critical parts that I think are important for the committee and the public to know. So I am pleased to inform the board and the public that Totten High School has been awarded a $400,000 grant from the Ba Foundation as part of Phase Two of Meeting the Moment Cohort. The two-year grant with the focus on creating a more inclusive and supportive and rigorous environment for all students. Assistant Principal for Teaching and Learning Carolyn Blinow will lead the implementation of this transformative work. The initiative will involve the entire school community, teachers, families, students, ensuring that changes we make are deeply rooted in our students' actual experiences and needs. Key areas of focus include strengthening instructional practices through targeted coaching and leadership support, building a stronger sense of community in reviewing our discipline practices to ensure they are equitable and also incorporate restorative practices. Activities such as, such as student summits, empathy interviews, which I conducted last May with graduating seniors, and shadowing will be a critical in driving the changes needed to support the whole student at Totten High School. So we've already received positive, encouraging feedback from students who actually participated in several Ba visits out of state. And we're going to continue with those student-led Ba visits out of state. And we will, with the continued support of the Ba Foundation, the Totten Public Schools is well-positioned to redefine the high school experience and fulfill our mission of academic excellence for every student in every classroom. I'm also proud to say that in my seven years as superintendent, this is probably by far the best all-admin retreat that we've had. No offense, Mr. Schofs, I know you've attended a few. But I will say, the feedback from our administrators was outstanding. So I'm happy to report that the district-wide administrators, including members from the leadership team, principals and assistant, assistant and associate principals and curriculum directors and supervisors, met for an engaging and inspiring retreat earlier this month. Over two days, we participated in professional learning and development activities. These included team-building and leadership exercise centered around the theme of belonging. The exercises were designed to be enjoyable and interactive and the aim to identify key leadership traits, create a supportive environment, and promote risk-taking. New edu, also, administrators were exposed to the new Educated Evaluation Rubric from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. of Elementary and Secondary Education. This work was led by Dr. Teresa Craig, who's the former executive director of Reed's Collaborative. She facilitated the orientation. And then also in the afternoon on one of the days, we took a deep dive into preliminary MCAS data, and administrators started working on their goals. I want to thank several school committee members who took the time. And again, I know everybody has day jobs and other commitments, but we do appreciate those who do have a little more flexibility in their schedules, who took the time to come participate in one of the activities. So thank you, Dr. DeMello, thank you, Mr. Laura, and thank you, Mrs. Shavz. I hope you had a chance to see firsthand how engaging the retreat was. And for me, just seeing everybody energized and enthusiastic, it's a great way to start off the year. And I'm hoping, not hoping, I believe that energy will carry over into Convocation Day on Tuesday, the 27th, and will be, you know, work that we will use to launch the new school year, which, believe it or not, a week from today, eight thousand one hundred and ninety students will be arriving on our doorstep. That concludes my report.
And on that note, if there's no questions or comments, we will move on. So we have administrative business. First is the staffing report. Any business with that, Superintendent?
The only thing is on the second staffing item, I'm happy to report that we are ninety percent staff when it comes to teachers in our classrooms. And we have five schools, a fully staffed, with a teacher in every classroom, a little preschool, the junior elementary school, Elizabeth Cole Elementary School, Galligan Elementary School, Moncai Elementary School, middle schools. Freeman is down to two teaching positions, Martin, two teaching positions, and Parker Middle School is down to two teaching positions as well. And the high school has done some great work under the leadership of Dr. Harrison and Assistant Principal Carolyn Blinow. They still have five positions, but I'm very optimistic about the work that has taken place in our districts. And as I've shared with the school committee, staffing is one of my top two goals this year, to ensure that we have fewer vacancies than where we ended fiscal '24.
Okay. Thank you. And so, and there's also the enrollment update, which I believe everyone's had a chance to look at, so if there's no comments or questions on that, Mr. Laura?
There was a position, I think about a librarian position a few months ago that was pending. Has that been resolved?
We had one recommendation made last week. There now is two positions open. There's a candidate that's being recommended for the Galligan Bennett, and I believe the high school has selected someone. I'm not sure if they've accepted the offer. So we should be, I'm saying now, all filled in our library spots.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. All right.
And then, just on the staffing report, so in your packet, you have last week's numbers. So last week on 8/14, we had eight thousand and seven students. As of this afternoon, we're up to eight thousand one hundred and ninety students, and we are still registering and enrolling students as we speak. And we're seeing a nice uptick in kindergarten. We're up to five hundred and forty students in kindergarten. I believe your report reflects five hundred and twenty-one. Our pre-K program, again, I got to commend the committee for having the foresight to invest in pre-K, because I do believe universal pre-K will be something we'll see within the next two years. We're up to three hundred and twenty-one students in pre-K. And I want to just remind the school committee and the parents at home, grades one through twelve begin on the 28th. Pre-K and K come to school on September 4th. That'll be the first day for pre-K and K. So two different start dates.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent. All right, we will go to Subcommittee Reports, Finance and Law. Dr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mayor. The special meeting of the Finance and Law Subcommittee met this evening for an intense one hour and forty minutes. Present were Mr. Viera and Mrs. Shavz and myself. The subject matter was to review a request proposal for legal services. A motion was made to recommend the award to Amerik and O'Connell and to refer it to the committee to hold on September 4th. So that will be on the agenda of September 4th. And then the regular Finance and Law Subcommittee met at 5:45, its normal start time. First on the agenda was a procure, oh, also present were Mrs. Shavz, Mr. Viera, and myself. First on the agenda was the procurement card. It was a memo that was reviewed by Mrs. Monahan, and there were no questions asked, so it was just received and placed on file. And then the second item were bills payable. We started off with FY25 for the amount of $484,338.39. The motion to vote unanimously to approve that with a couple of questions. First and foremost, there was an item regarding outsourcing some printing material to a company online, and the response was it could be in a timely manner, and the cost was less. So of course, we always like to support local if possible. And then there was suggestion made regarding applying for an Uber business application for folks traveling on the school committee, on the school business, to conferences, presentations, so forth, and also to look into the Lyft for Business app. And the reason being, not only is it more centralized and one form of payment, which could be the procurement card it's tagged to, but it's also a duty of care issue, safety of our employees knowing where they are at all times for the best interest of them. So a motion was made unanimously to refer that to future discovery. I believe there was something that we needed to go through the city ordinance, is that correct? So we're going to look into that, but the motion was made and voted unanimously, and the entire FY25 warrant in the amount of $484,338.39 was approved. Second on the Finance and Law agenda was FY24, bills payable for $268,067.33. And just allow me one second here. A question was asked regarding Bristol Community College about paying $15,000, what that was for. And of course, it's for our early college. And a comment was made by myself, you know, the state government's been very creative in offering adults twenty-five and over free education for community college. Why can't our kids get it for free? Why are we paying for that? So basically, it's something that's a wish, and we just paid the bill, and that's it. And that was voted unanimously by all three committee members, and that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Motion to accept the report and adopt the recommendations of the Subcommittee.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. I seem to not have the second page of the agenda. May I look at yours?
Absolutely. There you go.
Oh, me, dear. So next is new business?
Mayor, I just had one comment, and the superintendent said it three times already. It's about back to school on the 28th of August, which we're, we know it's right around the corner, but we need to remind our folks at home, and that's from grades one through twelve. And the correction for pre-K is September 5th, not September 4th.
Okay. Thank you.
Wednesday.
All right. So K, we have unfinished business and action item updates. Number one is Two Hamilton Street City Assessment Update.
So in your packet, I believe you have a letter that I received, and that was addressed to the school committee members on July 30th from Superintendent of Buildings Christopher Carmichael, in which he provides you with an update on the work that has taken place at Two Hamilton Street. I provided you a cover memo that kind of summarizes his memo, but you do have all the work that's been taking place regarding Two Hamilton Street. And I just wanted to make sure that the committee is aware of the work that has taken place so that we can begin to have conversations on, if there's a desire on the committee's side, to further engage in conversations regarding this facility.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent. And as you can see, a lot of work is taking place. Mr. Enos?
I was thinking about inviting the engineer, Mr. Carmichael, and Mr. Del Russo back in to give us a further update on the building, just see where we're at and what the next step is, maybe the 18th of September or so.
Okay. So is that your motion?
It's formed as a motion.
Okay. So a motion to invite those three parties in on September 18th?
Engineer, Mr. Carmichael, who's a building superintendent and CFO, Del Russo, to a school committee meeting to give an update on the coiled building.
Okay, motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion and seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Okay, thank you. And then, anything on the action item update?
The only thing on the action item update is I do know on the first two items, I'm sorry, I do, I anticipate in the near future, items dated 9/7/22 and 10/5/22 will be coming off shortly. So I did receive an update today regarding the food truck, the food service truck, I was told is being wrapped today, and then it should go through its final inspection, so we should have that shortly. And the culinary kitchen expansion, that work will be completed sometime late October. And the Taunton High School awning, which I hope some of you have had a chance to see, there is a piece that is missing on the back of the school in the alley. That piece is being refurbished, and it will be installed, and then that project will be completed. So other than those two items, and other than the items I've shared with you in my weekly Superintendent's, weekly school committee report, it's been a very, very busy, active summer on the facility side.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Viera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the culinary kitchen, is it not going to be the students, are they going to be able to utilize or practice at the start of the school year, or is that going to affect their ability to?
It's going to affect the program as far as their ability to get into the actual commercial kitchen and be able to prepare food, to prepare meals. And we knew this when the bid was awarded, that this product would be completed sometime. I mean, we're expecting end of October.
That's a pretty high date. That's not...
Well, you know with construction, especially construction in the building, that's not new. There could be some unforeseen conditions, unforeseen circumstances. There was an unforeseen condition or circumstance with a drainage pipe that had to be rerouted and reconnected. So as of today, that's been the only unforeseen condition, but other than that, the product has been running pretty smoothly.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Dr. Ma?
Mayor, thank you. On the action item, traffic and parking situation at the high school, we met on a few occasions. I know Mr. Viera was present, and I believe Mrs. Shavz was present. Mrs., no, Mrs. Shavz wasn't yet here. Mrs. Fagan was present. Since we have new leadership at the high school, are we going to reconvene this committee, or whatever we want to call it, to address the parking, or safety patterns, or drop-offs and all that stuff? Because we do have a new leader at the high school.
If that is in the form, I mean, obviously, it's on an action item, so we can, I don't think a motion would be needed, but we can coordinate, schedule some meetings once the school year starts.
Okay.
Okay, all right. So there are no press here this evening, so how about a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Thank you.